Next thing we're gonna do, we're gonna open our public hearing. For the 20... Twenty months' budget.
Yes, so, thank you, Marcy Bannon, for coming up and sharing that. We had an opportunity to present our budget to you, the board, at our July board meeting. So, Marcy's going to give us some highlights again, and then we'll take community comment and more discussion.
Good evening. So, as Marcy said, we presented the budget information at the July meeting. Wanted to make sure you all have ample information before adopting this evening. I am providing recap tonight of the July meeting, and of course, available, always available for any questions that you have. There's been one slight change to one of the documents called 1920 Draft OSB Budget Summary, and that's because we added Director Kinzler's information to the page 19. Here's a summary of what we presented. There's five funds in a school district. The general fund, which is our biggest fund. ASB, which is our student-driven dollars. Capital projects, that's used for modernization of buildings or building. Debt service fund, which is used for the payment of debt, and the money comes in from the dollars levy from the voters that approve that debt. And then transportation vehicle fund, that's used for the purchase of buses, and then the revenue comes in from the state on the depreciation schedule for the buses that are on the depreciation schedule. Enrollment, as a reminder, is done conservatively based on January's enrollment. We've rolled up January's numbers to the next grade and use it for the next year. The only modifications we make up to the roll-up numbers are 10th to 11th grade. We make a slight modification for the 10th graders that do not, sorry, that go to Running Start in 11th grade, and we make another slight modification at kindergarten where we just use kindergarten's numbers for kindergarten the next year because we budget conservatively. State funding revenue is driven by that projected enrollment, and that accounts for about 67% of our total revenue for the school year. Other revenue sources for our budget is 16% from another state funding, which is from bilingual transportation, learning assistance program, highly capable, and special ed. All those programs generate about 16%. Our levy, our local levy, generates about 9% of our budget. Nutrition services, Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. And special ed IDA comprises about 5% of the federal special services or special purpose fund. And the other 3% of our revenue comes in from local non-tax items, such as our lunch or breakfast sales to our kids, class fees, fines, facility use, investments, and donations. So, that makes up the whole 100% of our revenue sources that we get for district. Our expenditures that we have, 69% of our expenditures are on teaching and teaching activities. That includes things like teachers, the specialists, paras, extracurricular activities, library, counseling, safety, professional development, any curriculum, and instructional technology. That takes up all 69% of that, that chunk. 16% of our budget is other support activities, and that would include departments like transportation, maintenance, custodial, nutrition services, and then insurance and utility costs for the district would be in there. Central admin is about 9% of the budget, and that would include all costs associated with the board, the business office, HR, communications, superintendent's office, teaching, learning, and then some supervisory costs from other programs like special ed, transportation, nutrition services, and custodial maintenance. Just supervisory charges are there. The rest of the, sorry, another 6% is made up by building administration. That includes the principals, the assistant principals, and all costs associated with the personnel that work in the principal's office. So, the secretaries and the assistant secretaries are included in that. And that makes up all of our percentages. Oops, I missed a page, sorry. Nope, that's it. Okay, so, how does the money get spent? The money gets spent 40% on certificated salaries, about 18% on classified salaries, and about 24% on payroll taxes and benefits. So, that means 82% of our budget is spent on people and the costs associated with the people. Another 12% of our budget is spent on utilities, insurance, and things that we call purchased services. And that would include those kind of things like utilities, insurance, and other things that we have to purchase from outside agencies, such as our data network, our data security, that kind of stuff. About 6% is on our supplies and materials. And then less than 1% of our budget is spent on travel and capital outlay. Just to let you know that no, that covers the summary. Sorry, I'm talking kind of fast. There was no public comments or questions that were put into our dedicated email of budget input at ordering. Nothing came in that way. I did receive a few questions outside of that. One of them was our request for the full budget, and I directed them to the 1920 budget draft presentation that's been available on our website and was advertised as such. I got another question regarding the best place to find the figures used to calculate the total percent that was included in that central admin number. And I directed them to the 1920 draft budget presentation, page 11. That itemizes it piece by piece, what goes into that amount. And then how to compare specific line item in our budget, and when the F-195 report becomes available, anyone can take the F-195 reports from any year and compare every line item that they so desire. A board member sent in a couple of questions since the last meeting, and one of them was what the special infants and toddlers amount? What is that, and why is it almost double? And the reason for that is the special, take a deep breath. The allocation from the state is used specifically for students in the age range of birth to three. On the day of their third birthday, they won't longer become eligible for us to get revenue for this chunk of money. They are identified through the Child Find and Step Ahead Pierce County programs as being developmentally delayed and in need of home services. These are birth-to-three students have been identified as needing services, and it's all increased. So, we've about doubled. We've had nine in our budget last year, and we have 17 this year, which is the reason the amount doubled from last year to this year. We basically doubled in those kiddos. The other question was about Running Start. Why did our, on our four-year outlook for enrollment for Running Start, why did it decrease enough? Because our enrollment numbers on Running Start, while they've been increasing slightly, have not been very high. And so, on the four-year budget enrollment, I use averages, and so, the average for the four-year is a little bit lower because I base it on the last four years. So, it's a little bit lower than what our current is. And of course, I am available for any questions that you guys have tonight.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna open up to the public for comments only on the budget, directed to the board. You have three minutes. Anybody have any comments on the budget? No, this is a public hearing, so we don't speak just on the budget. It's your chance. Okay, this is none. We're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. The board have any comments? Any comments from the board? Good?
I thank you, board, for sending in so many questions. You have our staff popping this week, and in a good way. You gave us really good and thoughtful questions. So, thank you for thoroughly reviewing that, sending in questions so that we could address them. And thank you, Marcy, for taking the time to address those while you were sharing.
Thank you, Marcy. Now, we can close. I haven't closed the public hearing. We're gonna go back and open the regular meeting. Next one, the community comments. Anyone signed up? Basically, we have, you have three minutes to speak. There's a clock right there to tell you when you're getting close. When you're getting like a minute, I'll raise my hand. So, at three minutes, I will actually wrap it up. If you need a couple more minutes, feel free to have it. First one is Mr. Todd Gunther.
So, essentially, we get five minutes, right? I didn't know that. I would have, I would have had more stuff to say. So, good evening, commissioners, Dr. Shepherd, executive team, and audience. My name is Todd Gunther, and I have been a substitute period educator here for the last three years. I have four things to mention this evening. First, I wanted to congratulate Mrs. Lloyd and Mrs. Thibodeau for winning their primaries. I know a little bit what it's like to run, have your feet in the people's hands, and it's a little stressful, so congratulations to these ladies. Second, at your last board meeting, Dr. Shepherd mentioned wanting to include more stakeholders in your strategic plans. Good job, because many views make for better policy. And suggesting you might consider, however, is also including subs as stakeholders, as there are some pretty sharp folks among them. I know one sub who has a master's degree, another sub with psychology degree, and I'm told even one helps run a city. So, I think it would be a good place to start by including them as part of our family and as part of our surveys. Thirdly, I want to mention something that I feel strong about, and that is the subject of the lack of a disability swing still at PTR. As a district, we pride ourselves that all of our children are equal. But in the last few years, I have watched two more playsets be added to PTR for fully able children, and still, not one for our differently able children. To me, this is a failure, and it breaks my heart. These children are ignored enough in life. Let it not be from us. Lastly, I want to close by thanking the board for putting together new rules for adult-child interactions. In my duties as a sub, I've asked, been asked to temporarily be alone with children at times, and depending on where, and depending on where it can be, I often have felt uncomfortable. It doesn't protect our children, and it doesn't protect staff. So, good job, everyone here, on the work, on the conscientious, conscientious work you are doing on this. I'm glad to see it, it's a very noble thing. Thanks again for your hard work, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gunther.
Okay, next one, do you?
I did not have this planned, I promise. I didn't bring my big eye pads, but this is my little Bella, and she is in a wheelchair, and she attends Harmigan, Harmigan. I always get yelled at for saying it wrong by Kaven. She, and we love the new playground over there, but I kind, I wonder like, how do you guys decide what's gonna get put in there? And how, how is it determined? Because I know that that was developed or designed with special needs kids in mind. But our little Bella, being in a wheelchair, she can't use it. The wheelchair ramp goes right up into a big pile of woodchips. But that does no good. She can't, well, an adult couldn't push a wheelchair in woodchips very easily. So, for her, it was literally impossible. I don't have any clue how many kids are in wheelchairs in the school, but I know she isn't. To me, she's the most important, so. And so, I just would, would like to see maybe if it's possible to consider putting some type of different ground cover in there, looking at maybe doing the mats where the kids that are in wheelchairs could crawl around without splinters. I have, I understand that the woodchips in there are not supposed to cause splinters, but they do. And so, you know, and that, that's, there's nothing that you guys, I mean, that's nothing, you know, school board can do about that. But I think that just considering maybe a different flooring and ground and whatever in there would be good. I have talked to some people in the community, and I don't know if volunteers can, if we could raise our own money to do that, or if that's an option, that I, that is something that myself and a friend would be willing to spearhead if that's an option. So, if you guys did let me know on that, I would be happy, happy to help with that because, me, this is pretty important for our little ones.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory.
Any more comments from the board? Anybody have a great chance to sign up? This is your time. Yes, I just want to know. We have the modification of agenda.
I have one item. We'd like to add a human resources addendum to the consent calendar, and we'll add that to the consent agenda.
Can we motion?
I motion to approve the modification of agenda, adding the human resources consent agenda addendum.
All right, yeah, one second.
One second.
Are the favor? I oppose. Thank you. You have the executive session. How long? Okay. We're waiting on the attorney, so we'll just keep moving until he come before we go in the executive session. The national reports, personal financial report, this is prepared by. Prepared by, meaning they've prepared it, and we have a chance to look at it, and it's an agenda. Any questions on the board?
I got a question.
Sure.
It's in my notes, and I'm trying to get logged back in.
All right, all right.
See if I can get logged in.
Go away. See, I'm the only one I can privacy.
Yes.
Are you logged in?
I'm logged in.
Are you in?
I got, I got back in.
Well, that's all you.
I am.
I think I'm in.
I guess I have kind of a newbie question. So, when you're looking at this and you're looking at the June heading, and it says 83% of the year is completed, is that a September to August year when you're looking at those percentages?
Thank you, Marcy, for answering.
Thank you.
It is the number of months that are completed out of 12 of the year, and our year is September 1st through August 31st.
Okay, and so, then furthermore, when we're looking at these, and I'm just looking at one section where it says board, and you look at through June, 58% of that board's budget has been expended. So, that means 58% of the total allocated amount for this year for the school district has been paid out under those.
For us, okay.
For the school board. So, that item was school board. And the school board may get through August and not spend 100%. We can underspend, and then roll that into next year's fund balance. So, we like it when we get to do that.
And does the, then furthermore, sorry. Then, when they're in that subject category, and let's just say that the board, this category finishes the year with, you know, 40% left of their budget, does it have to be rolled into that same category, or can it be rolled into any category?
The, we're on a year-to-year basis, so the money stops at year end in each category, with the exception of a few that we have to stay in the categorical. But in the board's case, no, the dollars start over on September 1st. So, you go ahead.
Sorry, Marcy.
No, you're fine.
That way, the budget that you're seeing and you're approving tonight, if you, if the board chooses to, represents what that budget will be next year because we, we're not doing the budget that you're seeing tonight plus what's rolling into each of those. So, it starts out with the budget that you're seeing, and surplus goes into fund balance.
All right, we save it, so.
All right. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, Marcy, on page 17, the monthly donation report.
Yes.
We love the PTA, right?
Yes.
We love them. I was curious about the numbers because it seems like it's really odd. It's 3333. Is that an accurate number? There was $20,000 of donation for the playgrounds?
Yes. So, they do it in dollar amounts that are under the $5,000. There is a $5,000 threshold that changes the way they can donate. So, they donate in three chunks to keep it under that for each one of the schools. So, yes, there was $10,000 donated by PTA for OPS's playground equipment, and on PTR, it can be used for technology or playground equipment, is the way the grant is written.
Question for you now. How do we distribute the funds for the playgrounds, like hearing tonight, from our community members? There is a great need for special needs kids. So, are we able to look at the grant money and apply that towards some of those meetings? Do we make that decision, or is that PTA's decision?
PTA gives us the grant for the purpose. In their grant documentation, in this case, they did not go as so far to say it was you, to be used for swings, or it's to be used for slide. It is specifically, their grant says, to be used for playgrounds of the district.
And this money is specifically for this coming year, 2019, 2020?
Yes, their grant does, their grants, all of the PTA grants we receive aspire us to spend the dollars or let them know. Sometimes, if we don't spend all the grant dollars that you see on these reports, we will need to return it to them. So, I, there's a requirement that, of documentation, that we spent it on the purpose of the grant.
I would like to discover more about how we can apply some of these funds to, you know, help our special needs kids. I think that $20,000 seems like it's quite a bit of money. I mean, to add in accessibility so that kids who are handicapped or in wheelchairs can play with every other student, I think that would be amazing. And I would love to see this money be applied for something like that.
Thank you, Jessica. Executive Director Willis is ordering two swings for students at PTR for accessibility. And what I appreciate is we also heard other things like how do they have access to playground? I know the two swings are in the works, so it's good to hear the other input. And thank you for the board's direction and will and input around this, around PTA's donations.
Well, we talk about how education should be equitable for everyone, and I believe that we cannot forget about our special needs students. And hearing community comments tonight really puts the importance on how we must, as a board, take care of our kids, every single kid in our district.
Yes. Thank you, Marcy, for that. Want to sit down, is there any other questions?
Okay.
President Holland and I were just, for transparency, were just talking about the time. We know we had an executive session planned toward the beginning of the agenda, and then we were gonna move on with our other meeting items. And what we were just talking about is that, looking at our other agenda items. We want to honor the time of everyone here, and thank you for coming. So, we're thinking we can move through the other agenda items and then do our executive session because what we believe are the longer items we've already done.
Chris.
So, we have our restraint and isolation report, and this was prepared by, it's not needing to be a presentation. However, our board has sent in some questions, so we want to make sure that we publicly acknowledge and address those questions that the board has posed to us.
I want to thank you for, I want to thank you for reading the report and sharing, sharing and asking your questions because it, this, this report, this is the first report I did at the school. This is three years ago. And if you take a look, if you take a look from when I started till now, the number of restraints has gone up 575% from two years ago or three years ago, which is significant. And then also, the number of injuries has gone from six to 36, or 34. And so, yeah, 34. So, there's a couple of things I want you to take a look at. Number one, when somebody asks me whether or not they should write a report, I say, write the report. Anytime someone has an injury, whether it's a bruise, whether it's a pinch, whether it's a cut, any sort of injury that occurs on the job should be reported, no matter how large or small. So, what you'll realize here is that there were 34 injuries to staff this past year. Only 16 of those, it's 14, 14 of those, 14 of those were reported to LNI, and six resulted in a doctor's visit. One of the things that I want you to, I want to be really clear about is that I'll never, ever let staff know that they shouldn't report it. I'll never, ever say no when we touch a kid. I'm always saying, if I touch a kid, meaning picking them up off the ground, doing an escort, taking escort by the wrist, that way, we're actually taking the limbs and holding the limbs so they can't move their hand. That's considered a restraint. And so, in the past, in the past, there was some discussion about what a restraint is. People ask me whether or not it was a restraint. I tell them to stop asking the question and put down the report. And I want to make sure that families know, anytime we're actually touching a kid at all for any reason, we need to report it. Legally, we're required to report it within 24 hours by phone. And five days, they get that same written report that I get in my office. They get that same written report. And so, I, I want you to know that, obviously, this is concerning. I want you also to know that in the past, the numbers only included, when I just started, it only included special education students. The law changed about four years ago. Now, it includes all kids. So, you'll see a jump in the high school, that has to do with handcuffing. And so, that's considered a mechanical restraint. And so, that's where you're seeing some things. So, my conclusions would be, number one, I think our data collection's much better. Number two, if people ask me the question whether or not they should report it, I say, report it. And number three, I'm a big fan, honestly, I think that we should move beyond our current training model. They're only training our special education staff, actually training other staff as well because 50% of the restraints happen outside of special education, which is a significant increase over the past. So, any other questions at all?
And the question that Executive Director Willis was answering, the board specifically said, I noticed the numbers went up. Why is that?
Thank you.
So, thank you for addressing those questions from the board. Any other questions or clarifications?
Well, Mr. Willis, thank you for preparing this report, and also providing information when I asked you questions about the, the numbers. You explained to me about 50% being regarding special ed students. I really appreciate the fact that you mentioned that there needs to be more education for all staff.
Yeah, and so, the, the, the training itself, the training itself, it's called Right Response. And Right Response, three quarters of the training has to do with de-escalation. And only one quarter has to do with, some people here are taking, as actually putting hands on kids. So, the focus is on de-escalation, and just added a component on trauma-based, trauma-based engagement of students. In other words, how to interact with students who have been involved in trauma. And so, that's an additional module that's been included in part of the training.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
When do we collect the data? When do we collect the data?
So, um, the data, the data's collected ongoing throughout the year. So, um, so I have monthly data, we, they, um, they're required, um, to send it in within five days to the district office. Um, and then, um, we, we have to record it as we get it. And so I have, not real time, but it's pretty close to real time, real time data about all the information regarding, um, our, um, the restraints, the isolations, my injuries, um, I have all that, all of that information very, very regularly. And so then we're required, we're required to record it in January as part of a state report.
And another question for you, um, regarding staff. Uh, so when a staff member reports an injury, can you kind of walk us through that, the steps of what, how that is taken care of and how we respond?
When a staff comes to us and said they have a, there's a couple of different things because one of the things that, I'll go back. So on the form itself, the reporting form itself, uh, it states whether or not, um, there was an injury. So there's a check mark for staff injury and there's a check mark for student injury. And so that's what we record and send to the state. Then at the building level, um, there are just, the staff members ask whether or not, um, they want to put in, um, the information into, um, labor and industries. Um, but that's a reporting form that goes through human resources. Um, and the information that I gave you earlier, um, that basically out of those thirty-four injuries, um, we had fourteen injuries, fourteen of those injuries were reported to LNI. And so, um, in the scheme of things, um, if we had, if everything was the way we want it, is that everyone should be putting it into the system and reporting to human resources. Um, but that's not always the case because people are saying, gosh, you know, somebody says, it's not a big deal, um, it is cut my finger. Um, injury's an injury and, you know, we have to, we have to be really clear about to people that, you know, you had an injury on the job, whether it's a cut or a bruise, an injury is an injury. So the staff end up making a decision whether or not to report it or not to labor the industries.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Moving on, the second read of the policy four-two-six-zero BP, use of boarding district facilities. Any questions?
Any questions?
Need action?
Motion to approve the second reading of policy considerations. Second?
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, not, passed, thank you. Actually, we're going to go, uh, approve the consent agenda one through five. Any questions? If no questions, can we get a motion?
Motion to approve items one through five on the consent agenda. Second?
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass, thank you. The next item, listen, are action items? Really one for you.
I had a question, but I talked to Marcy before the meeting began, um, because our, our C W twenty-eight A requires us to respond to a couple of comments on the four-year budget and I just was wondering if we answered everyone's questions and, uh, it sounds like, um, she's answered questions and we're good to go.
That's it.
And I'll, uh, go ahead and motion to approve resolution number six of two thousand eighteen-nineteen for the approval of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget as well as the four-year budget summary and the four-year enrollment projecting, projection as outlined in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget presentation.
Second?
The first and second, any questions? All in favor?
No.
Aye. Opposed? Pass. A motion to capital facilities?
So each year we update our capital facility plan and in doing so, that allows us to collect impact fees. Melissa sent in a question, so thank you, Director Kinsler, for, um, asking a question specifically about the twenty-two acres of property, um, that's the property near Orville Road. We know that that's zoned, we've had it re, um, just recently we had it rechecked to ensure that it's been zoned correctly and that, um, it's not buildable and right now it's zoned for wetlands and lahar. Doesn't make sense to me that it's zoned for a lahar hazard when it's actually right next to, uh, Big Hill, the views. But that's how it's zoned currently. Um, so one of our board members asked about our plans for that property and in our capital facility plan, um, and long-range plans, it talks about our need for a future transportation and maintenance building. Right now our buses are housed right downtown and that worked when we were much smaller. All of our buses don't fit there and they're, you see how they're, it's really quite a puzzle how they're parked. Um, they're also parked out at the middle school. So we know that that's a future need. Um, we also know that our most pressing needs are classrooms for kids. So, uh, as, as our long-range planning team gets together starting this fall and, uh, re-digs into that work to prioritize our, our next facility needs, we'll see what emerges. But, um, that has been a long-range plan for that piece of property.
I did kind of have a follow-up question to that. Um, I know that the, uh, property itself is being used for esports in the area, new soccer fields. Are, is, does the district charge for use of that property and, or can they, do they? I don't even know if that's...
Yeah, we have, we have a facilities use policy and so, um, when people want to use our facilities, our fields, our stadium, um, in fact, we just approved an update to that facility use policy, um, that goes through our facilities use coordinator. So yes, that's, the district, um, coordinates that and charges for that.
Thank you.
What we try to do is charge as little as we can, especially when it serves Ording kids. So we say if it serves the majority of who's in that particular organization as Ording kids, we want to make it very accessible and give them priority. For example, if QL has a soccer league and they want to use that field and Ording has a soccer league and they want to use that field, we want Ording kids to have priority and we want to make sure it's really accessible and they get a bargain for it. In that facility use policy, we also are, um, looking at the booster programs and how our boosters who are working on behalf of our kids and building programs for our kids, um, so how they have, uh, more accessibility to our facilities as well.
Thank you. I have a comment. Looking at all of the developments that are either in design, planning, construction, um, we're definitely going to get an increase in students, our student population. Um, one of the concerns that I have is that our district, we determined, um, to not use the portable, uh, classrooms as part of the level of service capacity. Um, and although that's consistent with the Washington State school districts, um, I feel as though with all of the new developments, we're continuing to put on a Band-Aid and, um, I don't believe that it's adequate long-term instructional space for our students. A concern that I have, and I made a note, is our special needs students. Um, they require smaller classroom sizes and, or excuse me, require smaller classroom size and classroom, and more classroom space for their equipment and for their learning. Um, so this is a concern that I have and with all these developers coming in and the impact fees, um, that are, that will, we will receive as a district, um, I would like to understand and also be part of that discussion, um, so that we can meet the needs of all of our students.
And that was a recommendation that came out of our last facility team and we're starting new one in the fall, or same folks may join it and then we also welcome other folks to join it. Um, but what we talked about is do we want it when we're looking at our projected growth and when we're looking at our actual, the capacity that we currently have? We calculated it in two ways. We calculated it using portables and we calculated it also without using portables, not wanting portables to be a permanent solution so that we could see a real, um, because we were building out a twenty-year, a twenty-year plan. So we could see what real needs do we have for buildings because portables are such a tremendous support for us, but we know that it also doesn't provide the core spaces that we need, like often they don't provide additional bathrooms, the ones we're putting in PTR do, which increase student safety as well. But many of our portables don't, they don't provide extra library space and cafeteria space and gym space, all those core facilities that we know kids need. So we want to, we want to be realistic about the classroom space we have and we want to look, when we're looking twenty years down the road, ultimately, do we want to factor portables or do we want to say what's our permanent structure needs? And that's one of the first decisions really that the, that the long-range planning team will make is how do we want to calculate our current capacity? Is it using portables or not when we're looking at a long-range plan? Um, and I'd love for you to join that team and of course the board will be, uh, welcome to join the long-range planning team and that, that team will also provide ongoing reports back to the board.
Any other questions?
Well, a motion to approve resolution number seven of two thousand eighteen-nineteen for the capital facilities plan update.
Second?
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Excellent. Coach's contracts.
Any questions? A motion to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty coaching contracts.
Second?
The first and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Pass. Number four, minimum basic education. Any questions?
A board member did send in a question about this and it was regarding, um, our offering of financial classes. Executive Director Rab isn't here right now and I'm sure I can't answer as completely thoroughly as he can, but, um, we do offer finance, a finance course for our high school seniors, so we've made that adjustment on, in this report.
That's good, a lot of mothered factors, please. How could it affect you?
We'll all attend the class.
And, and a motion?
We make a motion to approve minimum basic education requirement compliance for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty?
And we get a second.
Second?
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Number five, I think we're programmed.
Yes, we make a motion to approve the transition of bilingual program. So I'm voting for this, right?
Ready, ready to talk.
I have a question. With the increase of the ELL students, um, from thirty-nine to fifty-seven, um, do we have the support with additional classified staff for this year?
Executive Director Willis, do you want to answer? We are, um, we have increased staffing to support the increased need and students we have around this, so.
Exciting, good.
Yeah, we had a significant increase in, in one year.
Yes.
Um, and so, um, our plan is, is to, not our plan, close to, um, is to hire a par educator to help support Rennel, um, in her work, um, to provide, um, ELL services to our kids who require them.
Mrs. Carrie Duner, will you come here?
Oh, she's awesome.
Yes. Can I make a motion now?
Give me the question, please, give me the question. Now you can.
Thank you for the good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice company.
Hey, let's go first. I make a motion to approve the transition of bilingual program? Second?
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, not passed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before we go to the board comments, we're going to go into executive session to discuss public employee, thirty minutes and, uh, no decision will be made coming out of it, we're just going to continue with the agenda, so you're welcome to come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight.